Mr. John.
President.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Meigs.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Ms. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Wadiska.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Aye, so move.
A second.
It's moved in second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion is adopted. We will now have Planning Commissioner reports. Any reports from this side of the...
Just the regular, the budget.
Anything from you?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
No? Nothing?
Just the usual budget meetings, a meeting with neighbors in Cherry Hill, all that. Wish you were part of, you met with Mr. Fears after I did. That's all.
Okay. Rob?
No more.
Mr. Wadiska.
I went through the CACT meeting on Wednesday and we had a, the first step in the traffic calming case for Parker and...
Kent.
This, what?
Kent.
Kent, Kent, I see.
Kent.
It's the offshoot. Parker's the street. And the first hurdle in this process, which is somewhat arduous, is that you have 25% of the 45, 44 homes identified. And the whole neighborhood came out. This was a very passionate group and almost unanimous agreement that something should be looked into. So I, being part of many of these, I was very surprised at the outcome or the turnout. Usually it's, you know, we just meet the threshold. Here, it was packed house. So we are definitely going to the next step in the process and we'll see what the data collection says and then we also then listen to the presentation about the reserve, so.
So the first step is to get 25% of the homeowners on the street?
The first step was previous month and you have to identify what the area in question is and then you send out letters to those houses that have been specifically identified by the CACT as relevant to the traffic calming area. And you have to then at the first meeting get 25% of whatever you've determined to be the number of houses. And then, then the next step, CACT reviews that information and then there's data collection that you put out, monitors to see how much, how many cars there are, what the speed is, what the average speed is. And then if it meets certain criteria, then you, the staff comes up with some solutions that work best, then that's presented to the neighborhood where they have to decide on one that they would agree with and then it has to get 67% support.
Oh, I thought it was 75.
It was until really, I'd say six months to a year ago, it was changed because that was felt to be two homeowners. So it's now 67%.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I ask, could I pass Russ's last question? Oh, thank you.
Is there anything in the CACT that deals with signs such as children playing or anything like that?
In this particular traffic calming case, no. In the traffic calming case, no.
Not in this particular case, but in anything that CACT...
No, I'm saying, Ms. Book, in this process, there is no place for those type of signs. I think that's just a staff issue.
Yeah. Reason I'm asking is within the last year, two years, we've had like probably 12, 15 kids move into the neighborhood and Seton has that hill, which is very dangerous. And then another thing, some of the parents are allowing their kids or they put them out there, the basketball nets, the basketball hoops on the road.
Well, that's not good.
It's not good. It's not good and it's up over a crest of a hill.
I did that.
Not good. But, but, you know, I need to start, I need to start seeing what we can do.
Well, get your petition going, go around to the neighbors, I think that's the start.
That'd kill me.
Uh huh. Then don't.
I hate those speed bumps.
Okay.
We're trying to move away from speed bumps.
Oh, yeah?
That is actually not an option that, I wouldn't go as far as to say it's our last resort, but it is a specific objective not to be, not to be speed bumps.
Really? Okay, maybe I will.
I don't know what the engineering staff will come up with, but they have said they're hoping not to use speed bumps.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Andy? No? Okay. Do we have any letters from those on other issues? We have a speaker slip. So we will move on to receipt of petitions. Do we have any petitioners in the audience for anything other than is on our agenda? Okay, I have one speaker slip, that is Pat Myers.
Can you get this out of your way? Is this okay?
Would you give your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, my name is Pat Myers and my address is 115 Buxton Road. I'm just going to read sort of the summation of my concern because I know I have a time limit.
Pat, would you, would you pull the microphone down just a little bit so, okay?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The specific issue that I'm concerned with, which has also concerned many other citizens in the Falls Church area, is the decision of the city staff to change the designation of a street known as 17th Street on the plat of a property at 406-408 Van Buren to Parkland. In a previous communication dated May 10th, 2011, John Boyle referred to the street as a platted but unopened street and stated that it has been the interpretation of my office to treat paper streets as having the weight and impact of a constructed street with regard to setbacks. On the lot, a budding 17th Street, now known as 408 Van Buren Street, a house is being built despite Mr. Boyle's determination in 2011 that no house could be built on this lot because of required setbacks, treating it in fact as a corner lot setback wise. A grading plan for this house was approved at the end of 2012. Now, it should be noted that Mr. Boyle's previous response stating that the street had to be treated as a constructed street was given to a Mr. Randawa, who was the present owner and builder on these lots, and he asked for, well, he received Mr. Boyle's response before he purchased the two lots from Mr. Vlahos in April 2012. My understanding is that this commission asked city staff about the status of the street, abutting the northern property line of 408 Van Buren, and had not been informed that the status of the street as a platted but unopened street had changed. More recently, given the fact that the foundation for a house at 408 Van Buren has been poured, city staff has announced that the street has been changed to Parkland. Therefore, the 30-foot setback is no longer required, becoming a side yard setback, and a building permit for construction of a house with a side yard rather than a front yard setback was granted. The issue I think that has to be addressed here is who can change the use of this street to Parkland. Now, given what I read in Section 1707 of the municipal code, the city planning commission is directed, or rather stated, that the widening, extension, narrowing, enlargement, vacation or change in the use of streets shall be submitted to the planning commission for its approval. And I'm not sure whether in fact this has been done, but I think that means that the power to change the use of 17th Street lies with the planning commission and not with the city staff. So I would request that the planning commission consider whether or not this house is being built without due process, that is, the planning commission approving a change in the use of 17th Street as opposed to city staff. And on a broader scale, I hope the planning commission will give immediate attention to considering recommendations for development of clear zoning ordinances and fair administration of those ordinances. You might remember a committee, ZOWAC, whose final report is dated December 2010. Now, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any significant response to that committee's recommendation for changing zoning ordinances of the city.
Thank you very much. Any comments?
I was actually going to bring this up during the planning director's report. We've had several discussions at our planning commission meetings, just recently, a few weeks ago, and also before the new determination was made, and we had said to staff that we felt that this was not a staff decision. And not only does the code use cite, there's another code in the charter at 1734 that says that the council ultimately is the final decider. So the planning commission can, has to look at it and recommend it, but that ultimately the council is the one who decides when a street is changed. So I don't know about other planning commissioners, but I 100% agree with you. We have protested the staff, we have protested the council, and so far there has been no real action upon the council or the city attorney, and the staff continued to move forward and then granted the building permit last week regardless of the fact that we have said to them this is not their responsibility or authority. I think I'm most upset about it because there were three public ways to deal with this. They could have gone and got a variance from the BZA on the setbacks, they could have came to the planning commission and asked us to vacate the street, or they could have gone directly to the council who would then would have had to return it to the planning commission for a recommendation, but either way, three different ways, and what they all three had in common was that they involved public meetings.
Right.
Meetings that citizens would be able to attend, would be able to comment. And instead, this street was vacated in a backroom deal, and that's what I consider it to be because it was vacated by staff without a public meeting. And I personally, I actually, when I found out the building permit had been, was being issued on Thursday, I seriously thought about resigning tonight from the planning commission. And I had several people talk me down this weekend because when we joined the planning commission, when the council becomes a council, other boards and commission, we all take an oath to uphold the laws of the city, the state and the country. And to me, we're sitting, we, despite our discussions with staff, we sat here and watched the law be broken. Not even just our ordinance, this is the city charter. And so I, only thing I can say to you is that we have protested. Unfortunately, our only legal counsel is the city attorney. City attorney works directly for the council and the city manager and they seem to not be concerned enough. So only thing I could say is that you need to talk to the council as well.
Well, I've written a letter to the city council, as have many other people, but I think the upshot of it is sort of a very depressing feeling on the part of the community that there isn't communication between staff and elected officials or that it just doesn't matter, that things are being unfairly followed as far as ordinances. It seems whimsical and I'm not sure where that fault lies, but it's very discouraging to the community as a whole. And I think it just leads to a bad feeling about competency of people that the community trusts.
I think ultimately it's the council's responsibility because they employ the city manager and the city manager is responsible to them and this is his staff. So if you ask me, it's the city council and also the city manager. But, you know, I'm not really sure what can be done in this situation. We talked to the city staff in public meetings several times and the first thing we said to them is we believe that Joey Randawa thinks he can build a house there, how can he think that based on the 2011 determination? And we were told, oh, well, we're looking into it. And at that point, we said it needs to be a public process. And then when we found out that there was a new determination, we said, you can't do this, we need it to be a public process. I think the citizens should be concerned because over the last, I guess, what, maybe five, six, 10 years, I see it over and over again, this movement to go around public meetings. And it's really a shame. Planning commissioners have to have training. Actually, funny, the council, the school board, they have no training, but planning commissioners and the BZA, we all have training. And when we go, we learn about city charters, we learn about state code, and one of the things that I think all of us have probably heard is that the man who runs it for the entire state always says to you, "City Falls Church is odd." We are different from every other jurisdiction in regards to what the planning commission can do. And what is the thing that makes us odd is we have more public meetings. We have more ability for public input. And this is what the city is based on and here is a situation where they went a route that didn't involve public meetings. So I have to say we're 100% in agreement with you, but we seem to be powerless.
Well, I think yes, if I were you, I would consider calling for a halt to construction since you didn't approve changing the use of that street and that's your responsibility, isn't it?
Yes.
Well...
Yes.
Well, but it's described in the city code as the planning commission must approve the change of a use of street.
Well, if we...
That's what I'm referring to and there may be other things that mitigate that responsibility.
I think the main thing is I truly wish we had a budget so we could hire our own lawyer. So that we could do something like that.
At present, we're waiting for a ruling from our city attorney, so...
Well, at present, that house is going up.
Yes, that's near my house too, so. Thank you for your statements and thought provoking request. Any further comments on this from the planning commission? Anyone else from the audience who wants to petition the council, the commission? All right, we will move on then to the planning director's report. Mr. Snyder.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. I wanted to mention that we are going to be moving forward with the comprehensive plan update and as we've mentioned, we want to give you homework and get your comments back. We've done that with chapter one. Tonight, we're going to be handing out chapter three. Elizabeth Perry is going to be giving us a little update on that. And we're also then going to be moving forward with demographics and transportation. I do want to mention that we, Falls Church's loss is Fairfax City's gain, Wendy Block Sanford has accepted a job as transportation head of Fairfax City where she'll be running a bus system and in charge of their program. So she's done a great job here and we're going to miss her, but it's a wonderful opportunity for her. She will have more responsibility and supervision and it's a terrific opportunity for her, so we're going to wish her well and be looking to plan some things for her as she makes this transition to Fairfax City. We do want to, she's done a lot of work on the transportation chapter, so we do want to get the benefit of that before she leaves. So that's one of the...
Get all the work out of her we can.
We do want to, also give us an opportunity and you to, to interact with her. Also, Cindy Mester is interested in doing a CIP update, I think at the chair's request. I'm looking at April 15th as being a good date for that. That's in advance, I think, of when city council takes their action on the CIP. So if that's, if that's something that would work for the commission, I'd like to pencil that in for that to happen. We've gotten confirmation from the Columbia Baptist Church that April 27th is a date that works for them and for us, for the public meeting for the South Washington Street area plan. This is, will be a chance to invite the public and to go over the draft with them and get feedback as we did for the North Washington Street plan. So if you put that on your calendars, that's Saturday, the 27th of April at Columbia Baptist Church, it'll be similar to the meeting we had on the North Washington Street plan. And then 1st of June, we're looking to do a kickoff for the city center area plan as well. We gave you copies of the draft plan at the last meeting and if you have comments and thoughts or need to talk to us either by email or phone, happy to do that. And also if we want to have more discussion on it, we could certainly schedule that. But love to hear your comments on that. We'll continue to refine that. April 1st, the city council has as a work session item, which I assume would be joint with you, an update on the area plan. They'd like to know kind of where we are, so be planning to do a short presentation to them to bring them up to speed as to the area planning work. And as you all, you all have an advanced copy of that and we'll be briefed on it, so put that on your calendar, April 1st. That's, we have a planning commission meeting that evening, but one of the items tentatively on the city council work session agenda is the April 1st update on the small area plan. So we hope that can continue along on schedule and we can get that planned on this spring as we had talked about. In terms of the comments made by the speaker, as you know, we talked about that at our last meeting. I had held the building permit because I was concerned about the larger planning issues. Some of these streets that are on paper, if you will, but do not show up on our future land use plan were identified as part of the PED plan, PED bike plan. That plan had suggestions about what to do with those, but that's been on hold. I've been looking into these throughout the city. This is an unusual situation because the street literally is not even listed on our comprehensive plan. It's basically a blank space. There's been earlier work done, I believe it's been five or six years now and some of you may be involved in this, where the question was, what's the city's policy going to be on these unplatted, unopened streets? The speaker is right in terms of the commission has authority over streets for that street to be built. The planning commission would actually have to approve construction of the street because presently none exists. It's basically a right of way that's platted but not shown on our plan. And we have several of these unidentified blank areas on the future land use plan. So I would be, I would love to have had the policy piece of this wrapped up and before the commission in advance of this kind of a change. We haven't vacated the street, there hasn't been an official change, it still is a blank space on the plan, but I would be happy to do a work session with you and go through all the various ones that have been identified that should be looked at. Frankly, I think they ought to be held by the city and used as open space. We need that open space and there's no plan to build these streets at present. I don't think we should vacate them and give them away. I think they should be held in public trust, but they should be identified on the plan and changed to whatever the appropriate designation is. For example, Great Falls Street, which was never put through, is presently not shown on the plan but is shown as a blank space. It's presently used as the parking lot for the adjacent park. Really ought to be designated as park. Presently, it's a white space on the plan with no label. So some of these are details. I understand the community's concern about them. These are things that need to be looked at and cleaned up and I do think there was a very good study done by, I think, John Murphy, who was one of the members of the open space task force that looked at this in great detail. One of the things I've found as I've worked here in the city is there's been a lot of good work done, but then it hasn't necessarily been brought to conclusion. This is an example of these leftover spaces that need to have a decision made. My recommendation would be to hold them as open space and change them appropriately on the plan. That is the commission's role and I've done a brief report, which I think I shared part of that with you at our last meeting. That's the direction I think we need to be headed into. I think also we really want to wrap up this split lot issue. As you know, the commission had worked on this. We held a listening session and we have recommendations. Needs to get on city council's agenda. I think Councilman Tarter has said that he's going to be the point person on it and trying to arrange a meeting with him and the chair of the commission and the city attorney to see if we can't, you know, advance this and get it on council's schedule so that it can move forward as an action. That is part of the issue with the lot in question was given the court actions on various lawsuits, that issue has not been brought forward with the proposed change that was talked about in the last work session we had with council and that we talked about in our listening session with the public. So I'm very anxious to settle that and get that out there one way or another with a decision made. And I think that's what we heard in our listening session as well. So I'd be happy to work with the chair of the commission to advance that with the council and Councilman Tarter so we can get that on the agenda and move forward with it. I guess we are interviewing some people to help us with the counter. Kurt, our administrative person is still in rehab, but we're, he's doing well, so we hope he'll be able to get back to us, but we're interviewing some folks to help us out in his absence. That's what I have at the moment. If there are any questions, be happy to answer them. One last thing I would mention, we are working, I think it was mentioned in the small area plan, you noticed that there was a reference to the possible reuse of the warehouse at 300 Huntington Avenue that had a planning commission. A site plan was approved for that building to be renovated. Good news is that the Easter Seals folks who are going to have to be vacating the Cherry Avenue property have a contract on that property to rehabilitate it and to build a, the nursery school within that building. And we are working on that as an administrative, administrative change to the site plan and keep you advised as how that's going. There is a coordination with Fairfax County because one corner of that property is in Fairfax and we are working on that with the zoning folks out there. So we hope that we'll be able to bring that forward as a, as a construction project and get them in to the building in the fall. It's on a fast, it'll take a lot of effort to do that, but they're going to be submitting plans on that. And I think the ultimate, the ultimate situation will be as the site plan that was approved, imagine we will have a renovated, improved site with a new building and more importantly, we'll be able to replace those lost daycare slots. There'll be 120 children be able to be in this building. And so that's, that's something we're looking forward to. And also we are working with housing to take a look at the Miller House, which is the vacant property that the city owns between the Crossman United Methodist Church and the Sunrise Nursing Home. There's going to be a little working group to see whether we could reuse that property and, and see if a special housing facility might be able to be built there to have a special, special need situation. So Lindy Hockenberry, I've talked with her about, she's your housing commission rep, about participating in that. Presently, it's a vacant building, building's in bad condition, it's zone transitional, so that type of uses are permitted as a matter of right. And so we're looking to see, you know, what better use can we make of that property than its present vacant condition? So those are some of the things we're working on. And again, if you have any questions or things that I could look into for you, I'd be happy to do that.
So you, you, so there's, we are absolutely powerless. You had many dulcet tones and said very little that I understood. So we were completely powerless on this Van Buren Street thing? We had no ability to force some sort of public meeting?
I researched it and looked into the question of what the proper determination, there was a redetermination done looking at that frontage. Talked with city attorney and the city manager, looked into what the status of that street is in terms of the master plan. And after consulting with them, felt they could not hold the permit any longer. And I think I briefed you all about some of those issues. And I think I briefed you all about some of those issues at your last meeting.
So the original 2011 letter was incorrect?
It was revised, based to some extent on actions taken with regard to other streets. For example, the house on Fulton that had Cedar Street on the back was...
That came before us.
That, well, that did. And it, it is a street that's actually on the plan.
It was on the plan.
It's on the plan, labeled.
It's a major parkland.
And it was, it was changed, but it, it literally is on the plan. Where 17th Street is not on the plan. It's not, not there. It's a blank space. So in that case, there was not a front yard requirement for that property. If you read the definition of street in the zoning ordinance, it talks about primary access. And the, in, in this instance, this street, which is not on the plan, not open, not built, provides no access to the property. And that, I believe, was the basis of the determination that was, was issued. As I mentioned to you, I think in our last...
The new determination?
The new determination.
Not the original determination?
Yeah.
So the original 2011 determination was wrong?
Was, it was...
Premature.
It was superseded by a more recent determination. Also mentioned to you, my intent to rework our determination process so that we put these things on the web and there is a comment period and we have a fee for them. So they are available to people to look at. And so that's my intent to follow through with that because presently, while they are done and there's a lot of research and discussion within the staff, it's not open and visible to the public. And I think the commission is right that that should be the case. And I think everyone would be better served, including staff, for that to occur. So in that instance...
Well, so your, your original answer, and you know, I'm not trying to, to be difficult. I feel like I'm, you're speaking in a foreign language and I'm getting about every third word.
I apologize.
The, so you're implying that somehow something that we did with regard to Cedar had implications to this?
When the, when the Fulton Avenue Historic House and tree and subdivision was looked at, there were issues with regard to the Historic House and the, the existing buildings along Cedar Street.
Yes.
The property potentially had like three front yards and there were existing buildings that were in that front yard setback off of Cedar. Cedar, in fact, was cha, was on the map but changed from right-of-way to public, open space and trails. And we requested that to be looked at in terms of why should we have a front yard setback from something that's not a street? And there was actually a garage in that area, a lot of inconsistencies in terms of what is along Cedar Street. And at any rate, that house is being renovated and redone. The tree has been preserved. And part of the intent, I think, of the commission's effort was to try to accomplish those things. In looking further at the open space trails, the open space studies that were done, looking at open space and trails, there are a number of recommendations about these unopened places like this.
And we...
All of which talk about them not being used as streets. When we went through the PED plan, these areas were not, you know, we checked with people about, should these streets ever be opened? Do we have any intention to build them? Many of them are actually in floodplains. There's no intent to build the streets. So they really, they're not on the map. They're not on a plan. And they were plotted in an old subdivision, but they are not being used presently.
Well...
And that's the reason, I think, for the change.
I, as a taxpayer in the City of Falls Church, I, I don't think that it is anyone's intention to, and my concern is you, you're still sort of dancing around this issue in a way that, again, I just feel like I'm not catching, that somehow we, the actions we may have been involved in with Cedar Street had some sort of precedent-setting action, which I, if that's what you're saying, just say it, because I'm, I'm kind of getting that, but not really. I don't think any taxpayer wants the city staff making these decisions. I think this is, this is absolutely open to the public. If we want this to be designated parkland, let's designate it parkland. This doesn't seem to be that difficult to me.
It, it has not been designated anything at this point. It's still blankspace on the plan. When I mentioned it...
See, I don't think that's true. It, it was designated a street. The, the staff undesignated it as a street, but it had been designated as a street.
And even more confusing though, on the site plan, on the grading plan, the zone administrator put street slash park. So he even waffled there on the language that's on the grading plan. So it just, it doesn't really make it...
It presently is undesignedated on the...
Well, no, it's a street. It is a paper street. We, we all know it's a paper street. It was clearly a paper street in 2011. I guess the question I have here is why were there a new determination? Did the zone administrator wake up one day and say, oh, well, since Cedar was, we, we treat Cedar a little differently, I'm going to do a new determination? Or did the builder come in and say, I want a new determination?
Builder made a request...
Or a new determination?
Of, of the zoning administrator to look at that issue.
Question two. In the future, if a builder comes in and doesn't like the paper street next to a piece of property and asks for another determination, is the staff willing to continue to decide that a paper street's not a paper street in the case of this determination? Is this going to happen again and again and again? Is this a precedence that's just happened?
Well, one of the things I, one of the things I talked to the commission about is I think we need to deal with these areas. There is a known amount of these and we talked about looking at those as a group. My recommendation is that we decide what we'd like them to be and for the commission to take that action.
And I agree with that, but it could take...
I also think though, a determination should be something that you pay a fee for and there should be a time limit on it. So when it's filed, people know it's been filed. And then there should be a comment period, including the manager. And then, once made, it should be out there for people to look at and say, I agree or not agree, and it could be appealed. And that's, that hasn't happened. So we don't, we don't have a fee for it and it needs to have a fee.
But, but the, but the, this is perhaps not the time or place for this, but this, what has been sort of certainly frustrating to people but is kind of fascinating to me. The zoning administrator's opinions have the force of law, except when they don't and can be reversed. And, and somehow, we're always seem to be, we being the city, seem to be on the wrong side of this each time. If, if he makes a determination, well, boom, it has the force of law. We're going to give him a building permit. Oh, wait a minute, we're going to reverse this one and give him a building permit. It's, it's frustrating.
And just if I...
From my point of view, I certainly would, I prefer to have the policy issues decided first. And all of these, these examples that have been in the various studies are ones that need to have the policy decision made.
I don't think...
And that's why I held, held the thing up, was concerned about the policy.
I don't think anyone here disagrees with that, that we should look at the land use of all these properties. I was on the Environmental Services Council when John Murphy helped us put that study together. And then I was on Open Space. We were all on it. We want these things to be done. But as the speaker said, she asked us if we'd done anything with ZOAC. And shockingly, we actually have. We've discussed it many, many times. We are working on different pieces that we're trying to get pushed through council. Some of them are waiting just so we can get a work session with council to get them to process it. So I just have this feeling that this, it will take us time to look at all these properties. So in the meantime, have, is this a precedence now that if one of these paper streets comes into play in a development and the developer asks you to treat it differently, can we expect the staff to do so? And no longer go, use the public process? No longer goes to BZA for a variance or asks for a new determination? I mean, ask for the, the paper street to be vacated and turned to parkland? Is that, is this a precedence? Because it could be two or three years before we get this land use done.
Well, I certainly hope we can get the land use stuff done. I, I think it would be helpful if we could do, I could have a session with you all and bring the city attorney in as well to talk about this. I do think these issues, I think we need to wrap those up and make it, decide what we think ought to be on those as opposed to these blank spots. I was frankly surprised when I looked closely at the map, is that these, they're literally, there are no names on these. They're not on the plan, unlike Cedar and some of the others where the commission took...
We understand that.
It has a name though.
Yeah, and we've discussed this and it does have a name. And despite what you said, that it doesn't, it's not useful through that one property, it actually does give access to a lot that's behind it that may need that lot, that lot if you're going to develop, it may need that ability to get to it from that paper street. And, because there is another paper street from Columbia, but that goes through Arlington Park. And I have a feeling Arlington is not going to have a road through their park. So I, and if we'd had a public meeting, the owners of those lots could have came and talked about the fact that they might need access to their lot. And, but we didn't have a public meeting. We went, we did the one process that didn't involve a public meeting. It's, it's a shame and it's regretful.
Lindy?
You know, what I'm, I'm just saying is that we have done administrative business with this developer before. And we've made some changes in things over Fulton Avenue. And he got, you know, that was rearranged and he's got the house, we were, he was able to sell that house. So I think he was taking advantage of that decision to move on this property. And I think he's, we were concerned about this for over a month or two months beforehand.
I think it started in November.
Yeah, it's, it's been, we're rambling around for a long, long while. And I really have difficulty with some, some of the zoning decisions on, you know, quite a few areas. I don't know. I, I just don't feel good about this one at all. I, I don't. But...
I'm, I would be interested in knowing why the determination was made, that it was a paper street and therefore not really a buildable lot, to the previous owner, who then was not able to sell his property as a lot that could be developed on, I mean, as, as two parcels that could be, both be developed. But when the, the next owner came in, the decision was changed and the land suddenly became parkland. And so this new owner, by asking for a different decision, got two lots that he could develop. It, this just doesn't seem right to me.
And we were worried about that.
Yeah. So anyway, we're, we're all very interested in this. Unfortunately, I'm afraid that, as they say, the horse has left the barn. There, there is a, a foundation going in, in there. And I don't know how we could stop that and then have a public hearing, but it's, I think, enough to know that the majority of the planning commission and from what I hear, a good number of the council is upset about this particular decision.
Well, I certainly would appreciate commission's support for my recommendation on a change to how we handle determinations. And we have a fee.
Oh, we're 100% behind that one.
And that we have a process. I think that would help because present, for example, you have to, without a fee, there's no incentive to some of the other remedies, which could pot, could, could certainly be one avenue. And, and also making sure we can then post these so that they're available for people. They can be put on the web, here they are. And when they're filed and when, and then there's a time period and then, once a decision's made with proper comment, they can be put out there. So they take a lot of time for people to do and that value ought to be recapt, captured. And I think it's, the public needs to be able to see these. So that's my recommendation is we, that we go that route and that's my intent. So with your support, I would like to head in that direction.
Okay, I think we've talked about this enough. Thank you for coming forward. Obviously, there are more people than, than you interested in this issue and I appreciate your comments. We shall move on to, what?
We still haven't had a chance to ask.
Okay, as I was going to say, we're going to move on to the...
Or Mr. Snyder to ask him any other questions about his report.
Oh, do you have other questions about his report? I'm sorry, Lindy, I didn't...
No. I just, I heard you, I, okay, start again. I thought that Cindy was going to be coming up here tonight to do the update to the CIP, but I guess she's downstairs or something, but...
She is, she's looking for a, a time to do that. So I was suggesting maybe April 15th could work.
But just with that in mind, I, you know, I know everybody got a copy of this, but I just wanted to point out that the city manager did concur with the planning commission's concept of funding to be met, set aside for concept planning for the area around the middle of high school. Even though, you know, so I thought that was, I really wanted to just bring that up and mention it so that, you know...
Right. And that, it's one of the reasons why I asked Cindy to come and update us on that is because we have a couple of new commissioners who would, I'm sure, be interested in hearing how the, the process works. We meet, we make, we have a hearing, we make a decision, it moves on and it comes back and it's different. So it would be, I think, good to have that explained.
Right. And the only other thing I really wanted to know is to maybe get some more information on the situation over at the property yard, where there are going to be offices put into the homeless shelter or something along that line? And whether, you know, who has jurisdiction over that and how that's decided? And it somehow comes under the agreement with Fairfax County?
No, I hadn't heard about that.
Well, we just started hearing about it. And I don't know any details about it, but I, I certainly do have some real concerns about that. And just as far as the community use and everything along those lines. But thank you.
Let me ask you, is the 15th of April too late or would you rather try to do it sooner in terms of Cindy's update? I was just trying to find the best, best time for you.
Well, our next, our next meeting, I think, is when we do the final recommendation on, on the reserve at Tanner Hill, isn't it?
Yes.
They're not, they're...
Yes. I believe so. So I was looking possibly at the 15th of April, if that wasn't too late to have that update, but...
Well, nothing's, nothing's going to change.
Nothing's going to change, but it would...
Nothing's going to change.
Yeah, I was just hoping that she could give us some insight into what happens.
Right, right.
Their adoption would be on the 22nd, the following week, so...
I think the 15th will be fine.
Okay. And I'll, we will ask about possibly an update then as to the situation with the homeless shelter.
But I just really wanted to emphasize that concurrence because we all thought that was rather important when we made that motion.
Right. Thank you, Lindy. Okay. Get this fixed?
Thank you all.
Is this coming in under Old Business?
Yes, this is coming, follow up from the comments made by the Planning Director regarding Chapter 3 of the Comprehensive Plan. As the Planning Director indicated, we'll be looking at Chapter 1 in your work session so to stay on target with our updates. I provided you this evening at the dais with a copy of the existing Chapter 3 in the 2005 adopted Comprehensive Plan and also a staff-proposed draft of the chapter. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to put that document to some context for you. And Chapter 3 is the Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter. It's one of our most interdisciplinary chapters in the Comprehensive Plan. And while it's not one of the most technical, where it's very interesting is that it's really trying to capture the essence of what makes Falls Church, Falls Church. So we worked with a lot of staff members from different city departments to provide us with some input on this chapter. And overall with the text, while the content didn't change, we did reorganize the text. And so it's more kind of subject-matter oriented. And that helped facilitate some more concise language, but it also identified maybe some gaps where there were, there was more information that we could put into the Comprehensive Plan that would talk about what the community does and how the community contributes to, to the city, to city life. So overall, the, unlike Chapter 1, which we showed you, this edit didn't really lend itself to a track change approach. So we just provided you with what we have in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan and then the staff-reposed draft. The other interesting point I'd like to make about this review of Chapter 3 is that it will set some guidance for staff regarding format for the other chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. Chapter 3 is formatted like many of the, or most of the other chapters in the Comprehensive Plan, and that is, you have a text in the beginning followed by a chart afterwards, which has a vision, goals, and strategies section. And in some ways, that can be very helpful. It creates a series of metrics. It kind of creates a work program at the, when we're doing an evaluation of the Comprehensive Plan or the efforts of staff, it kind of creates a scorecard, if you will. But at the same time, the Comprehensive Plan isn't really used like a work plan for the entire city. And there, there's a lot of information in these charts and it may be, there may be a better way, a more simple format that we can put these concepts into. So as you look at Chapter 3, not only looking at what Chapter 3 says in that chart, but thinking about, is there a better way to communicate this information and put it maybe in a more useful format for staff? Another point regarding that chart is that one approach could be that we identify what some of the priorities within that chart are. So maybe we don't really change what is in the chart, but we identify what maybe some of the top priorities are for the next coming years. So when you look through the Comprehensive Plan, again, looking at the proposed text changes, looking at the chart, thinking about maybe ideas for how we may be able to simplify that chart and to identify what you think some of the priorities, list of the items listed on those charts might be. Those would be helpful comments to staff and you can provide them to me via email. My email address is in the memo. We're asking for your comments by April 1st. And/or you can save your comments for when we have a work session in the near future on that chapter. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, I will just leave you with your work.
My question is, when, when is this going to come before us in a work session and then in final approval?
With regard to when we schedule for a work session, we haven't identified a timeline for that yet. Hopefully, within the next month... Hopefully, within the next month, as indicated by the planning director, there's a, there are a lot of items on your upcoming agenda. In terms of when there would be a final action, the idea was that we as a staff would bring forth to you about once a month, a new chapter. You would give us your input, we would go back and do any additional work that's needed, kind of set that chapter on the back burner as having had an initial review. With the idea that as we move forward, we want to go back and make some other changes to other chapters, maybe tighten them up, tweak them, and then at the end, have one final document that we bring forward for you for consideration. And what I will be doing throughout that process is tracking your comments so that when we have, so basically writing the staff report as we go, so that in the, in the coming months, when you actually look at the entire document, you can go back and see where we were, what we said, and then how we responded.
The April 15th meeting date is pretty open. We, the C I P update, we don't have other things scheduled for that. And so that could be a very good time to do this work session.
A work session, okay. Okay. Fine with everybody, all right. Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, thank you.
I'm seeing no new business on the agenda or other business. We have, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Does everyone have a chance to look over the minutes? I, I do have a question. I have actually two. 89 to 98. Staff is planning to establish a code for, a process for code determination by the zoning administrator, a proposed fee of $100,000.
Justing $1,000. I'm sorry.
Okay. I was going to say, that would certainly prevent people from-
It would be a discouragement, wouldn't it?
Yeah. That would work, I was hopeful.
Might solve our budget problems too.
Okay. And then my other question is, 174, Ms. Perry stated the, that the entire planning commission had given some input. I seem to remember Ms. Perry saying one or two had sent some input in. Two, okay.
Two.
But I think both statements are correct.
Okay.
That you had had a previous kind of work session come in at which you provided significantly comments. And then the homeowner's plan, two, you had provided.
Oh, okay.
So if you want me to clarify that.
Yeah, would you be, because I don't think Ms. Perry got as much help as I thought she should have gotten. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
No.
What, okay. Oh, wait a minute, we have one more.
I recall that our discussion of the Van Buren Street property in the last meeting, so I'm on line 124, was much more substantive than this. And perhaps, and, and so I am not disagreeing, so I don't know what I'm saying. It seemed to me that we could have had this conversation in two or three minutes and I love those kinds of conversations versus the 15 or 20 minute ones. But I think we spent a little more time on this. So here's my challenge, I don't know what's missing. This is like the teacher on the school bus that says, raise your hand if you're not here. But it seems to me we spent a little bit longer with this than this. Is there someplace else that this was in here? Well, okay, kinda, but-
I think it would be very difficult to put in the minutes exactly what went on in our last meeting.
Yeah, okay, fine. All right, never mind.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Your second?
Second.
All the, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved as amended.
Abstained.
Oh.
Yeah. This is on my ear.
I'd like to get a motion to adjourn, please. That's a good job.
I moved to adjourn.
Yay. He does that. I'll second.
Russ, Mr. Wadyska seconded. The meeting is adjourned.